...in 1975 entitled the Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting is provided as specified in the act. Proper notice of this public meeting was provided in notice of January 8th, 2018. Said notice was posted at the entrance of the Board of Education offices, mailed to Nutley Township Clerk, advertised at the Nutley Sun and Star Ledger on January 18th, 2018, posted on the district website. This is an official meeting. And can we all stand for a flag, so please? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in store. Roll call, Mr. President, Mr. President. Mr. Bassar.
Here.
Mrs. Nancek Martin.
Here.
Mr. Bararo.
Here.
Mr. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Kozinski.
Here.
Ms. Russo.
Here.
Mr. Sklera.
Here.
Ms. Sherman.
Here.
Mr. Carnesala.
Here.
Can we have an approval of the minutes, please?
Make a motion to move the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any correspondence this evening?
No, Mr. President.
Okay, so we're gonna start off with our first presentation this evening, which is going to be our HIP annual report with Mr. Capello, and I know that you were here less than six months ago. This is becoming repetitive. All right, can the board members, yeah, can the board members just go to the other side, please?
I'm Dr. Capello, an anti-bullying committee for the district. I'm acting as the anti-bullying bill of rights twice a year, which has been for, all right? I guess we could say state of the hip. We're sorry, I'm an anti-bullying bill of rights.
Here it is. It's decided not to.
I think it's not my voice.
What do you like?
So the information. Hello. So the information I'll be providing tonight is in regards to statistics, interventions, medial measures regarding cases which were presented to each school in the district from January 2018 through June of 2018. As the coordinator, we also have investigators, anti-bullying specialists, I just have to go this way, at each school. Mrs. Tannell is at Lincoln School as well as Spring Garden. We have Mrs. Sereniglia at Washington, and Mrs. Alfaro is at Radcliffe as well as Yanacaw. We have Mrs. Janace here at the middle school, and Mrs. Casili at the high school. Part, component of their job is to, if there ever is an alleged incident of HIB, they need to conduct an investigation, which is initiated by the principal, and it's led by the anti-bullying specialist, and anyone else who the principal appoints to serve as part of an investigation team. Through the investigation, there is the team that conducts the investigation. They have to make a determination on the investigation. We do have three categories in which we determine what is the incident. One could be a non-HIP event, which does not meet the criteria for HIP. It may not be, it's not gonna be a code of conduct issue, or a code of conduct violation. It could be a misunderstanding, it could be a conflict, which did not meet the criteria for either one. If the event, the incident meets the criteria for HIB, it will be deemed as an HIB event. Or if it did not meet the criteria for an HIB, however, their behavior was not school-appropriate, it will be considered a violation of the student code of conduct. So here are our statistics from January to June. Throughout the district, we had a total of forty-nine cases that were investigations. We have forty-nine investigations, and as you can see here, the breakdown by school. Lincoln had four, Radcliffe had seven, Spring Garden had fourteen, Washington, three, Yanacaw had eight, at the middle school, we had four, and at Nutley High School, there were nine cases that were investigated. Now I break them down by elementary level, so if you can see, to the left, the blue is the number of investigations. In green, we have, if they were considered a non-HIP event, code of conduct is in purple, and in red, it was considered a HIP. So as you can see, at Lincoln School, out of the four investigations, four were considered non-HIP. Out of the seven at Radcliffe, four were considered HIB, two were considered non-HIB, and one was a code of conduct. At Spring Garden, we had fourteen investigations, one was considered an HIB event, nine were considered non-HIP events, as well as four were considered code of conduct. Washington, we had three investigations, two were a HIP, and one was considered a code of conduct. And at Yanacaw, we had eight investigations, there were four confirmed HIBs, and four were considered non-HIP. When we make a determination if there, if there's an incident and it is, an event that is considered HIP, part of the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights is, what was the protected characteristic that was targeted? So as you can see here, the breakdown, the actual perceived characteristic, why was the incident, what motivated the incident? And here is a breakdown. Because there were no incidents of HIB at Lincoln School, it was inapplicable. Out of the four cases at Radcliffe, those were the targeted, one was gender, one was sexual orientation, and two were considered other distinguishing characteristic. As well, just to let you know, so, Spring Garden is a good example, there was one case that was considered HIP, however, it was based upon race and color. So you could have one case, but you could have multiple characteristics which were targeted of an individual, of a victim. Washington, two cases, both of those cases were based upon other distinguishing characteristic, and the four cases at Yanacaw, one was on color, race, gender, disability, sexual orientation, and three of them were considered other distinguishing characteristic. At the middle school, we had four cases of HIB, one was a HIP, two were considered non, and one was a code of conduct violation. At the high school, we had nine cases that were investigated, out of those nine, seven were considered HIB, two were considered non-HIP events. At the one case of John Walker Middle School, it was for two protective characteristics, sexual orientation, another distinguishing characteristic. Out of the seven cases at the high school, one was based on ancestry, one was on gender, one, race, and four were other. What are we doing to remediate the situation, to address the incident? It's not just about providing discipline to the aggressor. What can we do to prevent this from happening again, to remediate it, to make it work where everyone feels safe coming to school, we have a safe school climate? So here are some examples throughout the district. Sometimes there is a discipline. It could be a loss of privilege. At the elementary level, sometimes there could be a lunchtime detention, which is a privilege to go out. At times, there could be a verbal warning, sometimes it could be a contact at the Nutley Police Department if it warrants it, school-based counseling, support services through the school counseling, through special services, an array of different assignments. It could be a worksheet, a think about an assignment, what could they have done differently? They have to write about it, and then they can process it with the anti-bullying specialists who are school counselors as well, or student assistance counselors. Observe a video, read a book, apology letter, reaction essay, other miscellaneous interventions, continuous contact with parents, conferences, law received, schedule changes, staff monitoring, where we inform staff that there was a situation, we don't go into great detail, but for teachers to monitor the situation. Frequently, constant classroom lessons, not only as interventions to incidents, but to educational preventative measures as well. Referral to local providers, if there are any type of counselors in the area, we refer out as well. District-wide, we're constantly training the new staff. At every board meeting, there are new hirings, so every time there's a new hiring, we're conducting new staff trainings. We meet with students to educate them as well, regarding the Anti-Bullying Bill of Rights, our HIB policy, or any other related trainings that could be not just based upon bullying prevention, but character education as well. Create a safe school climate, positive school climate, acknowledging students, staff for accomplishments. I do maintain the HIB link on the district website. We also have affirmative action on a yearly basis, that's a training for staff that's HIB-related. We conducted one on sexual harassment this past school year. Once again, at the classroom level, different classroom lessons. At the elementary schools, sixth graders, we conduct the LEAD program, law enforcement against drugs. The middle school, we do a lot of our education through our advisory period, which is conducted twice a month. Actually, today, we actually had an advisory program on citizenship in our community through the athletic department, a lot at the high school, community service projects, lessons infused into the curriculum, veterans' clubs that are doing programs based upon citizenship and character education, assemblies, fundraisers, spear weeks. This year, we also had the Week of Respect. District-wide, we had the Blue Shirt Day. At the elementary level, they did two different related activities in which they watched the video and processed it, and did an, they had to go home and do an assignment with their parent and return it to school. We conducted, at the middle school, an advisory lesson. At the high school, they had various theme days, respect quotes that were announced throughout the week in different assemblies. I provided information to the Board of Ed with Dr. Glazer that was submitted in July, and we will be receiving our grades, hopefully, usually we receive them in December. Unfortunately, last year, we did not receive them until June. That would be, I'm sorry? Oh, thank you. And once, though, we receive those grades, they will be posted on the district website. Thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna turn it over to Dr. Glazer, our superintendent of schools, for the, what's next presentation.
What's next? I know, take the whole thing out with. Good evening, everybody, and this is a necessary presentation. What's next? They couldn't think of anything better to call it, so, what's next? As you all know, the referendum didn't pass, although by a very close margin, and because of that, it does require us to take the action that we proposed. Although it's not desirable, we do need to move forward with plans to accommodate Nutley students, and at the same time, continue our positive trajectory for providing a high-quality education for our students. The planning for this has to pursue several different paths, all simultaneously, so I'm gonna try and detail those now, and give you an opportunity to hear some of our thought process. So first, we do need to move forward with the purchase from the Church of the Land Behind the Middle School. It's currently available, budgeted, and still available, and that was, as you might remember, intended to alleviate parking issues. We've also reached out to Ross Haber, our demographer, our district demographer. He is the person that completed the investigation of our enrollment overcrowding back in the fall of 2016, and he published his demographic report early in 2017. At that time, he contracted him not only to use the New Jersey Department of Education cohort model to project enrollment at K to eight for the following five years, actually, pre-K to eight, I'm sorry, for the following five years, but also for the high school for the following ten years. At that time, he studied all of the available instructional space in each building, he spent a tremendous amount of time in each building, and he did, as we know, identify that there was none remaining. He also built in his projections on the Nutley class size guidelines, as you know, were already above the best practice guidelines, and that is below our current number, what he projected. So in studying, at that time, a moderate redistricting based on those numbers in the available space, it was determined that if we tried that at the time, we'd just be moving the problem around. Since then, we've been deferring students when we are out of space from their home school as an alternative. We have, as I said, reached out to Dr. Haber, we are asking him to update the cohort numbers for enrollment, as well as look at a full-scale redistricting that might include moving established lines of demarcation for school zones. And every time I say this, I'm just gonna stop right now, since every time I say this, I get a bunch of new variance requests. Just at the mention of this option, please know that that's not gonna just happen, doesn't happen without study, there is much community involvement, and if that time ever comes, there's extensive planning and phasing in for students. I, you know, somebody always calls me, literally, the same night, and says, "No, I have a sixth grader, where will the sixth grader go?" I promise you, it's much more study and a much longer process than that, the planning is extensive. He'll also make sure he updates the enrollment numbers, because the original enrollment numbers did not consider development that's happened since 2016, single-family home sales since 2016, additional mandates and other things that are what we call impacting factors, since he completed that report. At the time of the report, we also knew that if we didn't add on to the existing buildings and relieve the classroom space issues, that we would in fact need to add additional trailers that was projected at Washington School for 2020, and the enrollment's actually higher than the projection. His numbers consistently, from 1995, 2003, 2006, 2009, and 2016 have been spot-on. In 2016, we contracted a company called Mob Space to construct modular units at Washington School and Yanacaw School. We were very proactive and built one of the modular units at Washington School with the capability of double-decking it, so we would be able to add two additional classrooms if that was needed, for a total at Washington School of six. We actually needed it for this past September, but we waited for the referendum, because obviously, it's very expensive to do that kind of work, and it is considered a temporary solution. The cost at Washington in 2016 was $777,575. That was the cost to build the trailer, with a strong enough foundation to hold the second story, that cost about one and a half times more than a regular single-story trailer. We also, at that time, added a trailer at Yanacaw School. The cost of the singular, single modular Yanacaw School was $287,180. If we continue this way, we will need to procure a double-decker trailer for Spring Garden School, and the additional trailer for Washington School for September. The double stacks not only require the foundation, railings, ramps, but also the lifts, the elevator lifts, for Americans with disabilities access. I have to tell you that already, our projections for special education and for our preschool program currently are requiring us to consider an additional trailer at Lincoln School. So where the trailers are cited at Washington and Spring Garden, Lincoln is currently in consideration. We also waited for the referendum to do necessary security fencing at Yanacaw School. Again, we did wait to do that, because the estimates are that it would cost about $40,000, and we didn't want to do that if we would be removing the trailers. For everything that I've just mentioned, we are estimating about one and a half to $2 million to complete those projects. As for a timeline, we're actually very fortunate, because this board has been proactive, started having the design and the trailer cited. So for you since September, we need to have the additional units ordered and contracted by early March. That gives us a little bit of time to continue to plan, to bring in the demographer, and to be able to continue our community conversations. Again, I've been asked this question almost every day this week, so I'm just going to address it again. We already did consider the Valley National Bank Building, we've toured it with the board, with trailers. It is not possible or viable space for us. We looked at it as an early childhood center, we looked at it as just available space. It doesn't have the footprint or the necessary space for the number of classrooms that we would need. We also ruled out the Chickolini Building. Again, it's not a viable space for the school district, for what we need. It would need to be from scratch, and there's not an available square footage and parking area to make it use our needs. So, beyond that, we also need to consider replacing the old trailers at Yanacaw. Again, we haven't done that, because we've been hopeful through two referendums that we'd be removing those trailers. The first trailer at Yanacaw was purchased, used, in 2002, sixteen years ago. Again, a temporary solution, just for two years. And the second trailer was purchased, used, in 2006. Those original trailers are single classrooms without bathrooms, they are not cited on any permanent foundation, and obviously, the ones that were added in 2016 are new, they each have two classrooms and bathrooms. If we do have to replace those trailers at Yanacaw, and only an inspector can tell us if we need to do that, there would be an additional cost. We might get lucky and recoup some money if we can sell those older units, but again, they're very old and without the bathrooms, not as desirable. Again, this does not consider any of these costs, doesn't consider all of the other security upgrades that have been identified, and, again, since people ask, where's all this money coming from? All of these costs come out of our capital reserves, and they do complete our capital reserves. And I have to say to Karen Ebbins, who has worked diligently with the board to be effective and efficient with the budget, it's taken us seven years to accumulate that money and about seven seconds to spend it. As we've said all along in this process, we're gonna continue to report to the community, we are hoping you'll stay engaged in the process of addressing these issues. These are long-term issues, they are not something that's gone away over a period of years, or that without significant work are going to go away. Again, very fortunate that we're in our second strategic plan, those committees are active. We're currently working now to develop the budget for 2019, 2020, so that gives us another opportunity to engage the community and talk about what still might be possible. I remain, call me whatever you want, but I remain optimistic that working together, we're gonna continue to look at every single option, and we're gonna provide the best education possible for Nutley students. Thank you.
Would you like me to give you a little break and go over to Karen?
Sure.
All right, we're gonna have our board secretary's report, Mrs. Karen Ebbins.
So my report is quite brief for this evening. Most importantly, I wanna point out a couple of resolutions that are on this evening's agenda, and notably, items that are, we are purchasing with respect to our security upgrades. Two large purchases, one is to install card swipes outside of all the bathrooms in every building in the district, as well as the fieldhouse. And the second part to that is to expand our security camera system, so that it can hold recordings for up to 45 days, so that we have more historical references in the case, when the need arises, that we need to go back to those cameras to see what happened at any point in time during the school day and after hours. As Dr. Glazer mentioned, the funding for these projects is coming out of the district's capital reserve account. And other than that, we are, as Dr. Glazer said, in the midst of preparing, starting to review budget submissions from our entire administrative team, and we will be scheduling meetings with each and every one of them to review their requests, so that we can get to a more refined finalized budget, which will be presented through board committees, and then ultimately, at the tentative budget that is being adopted in March, and then the final budget in the beginning of May. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Ebbins. All right, we're gonna go back over to our superintendent for her superintendent's report.
Separate from what's next, I do have a superintendent's report. And again, since we have a lot of the same people we see all the time, you already know that I'm somebody who tries to cultivate an attitude of gratitude at all the times. That means that I make it a habit to express thankfulness and appreciation in all parts of my life, and on a regular basis, for everything big and small. I do that at every board meeting, but tonight, I thought it was especially important, because if you concentrate on what you have, you always have more. And at this Thanksgiving time, I'm blessed, we're blessed, and our district cup does run us over. Since our last meeting, our Nutley High School competed in the U.S. Band National Championships, we were named Best Percussion. Additionally, the marching band came in third in the national championships, once again, just by about a tenth double point. Our students have had an incredible season, and I offer thanks to Linni Bigarala, thank you, Nick. And that gave us the first time this year, and all of the supporting, parents, and brothers and sisters, and people who came out to cheer, not just at the competitions, but at the football game. Your time and effort has been monumental, just monumental, it's made for a fun season. Additionally, the Patriot Club and advisor JD Nick, is JD here tonight? No, no, he's here tonight, he's had a lot of late nights. Honored our veterans with a great evening, celebrating Nutley's veterans in particular. And I have to say, this is my third time doing it, and it is so moving to have every branch of the service recognized by our students. And this year, we had the addition of the West Point Duo and the USO, so it also made a really fun time, I think, for everybody in attendance. So thank you to JD, the Patriot Club, our commissioners, everybody that came out to make such a terrific program. I also have to include the Nutley Family Service Bureau, and all of our high school and community volunteers, who hosted a terrific spaghetti dinner for the veterans at the, what's the?
Knights of Columbus.
Thank you, the Knights of Columbus. For me, I loved hearing the stories, and selfishly, I loved having the opportunity to talk about my father, who is a veteran of the Korean War, so truly a lovely night. Our elementary conferences were held last week, thank you to all of our teachers, our parents, and our administrators who arranged their schedules to make sure that there is an opportunity to talk about students with their parents.
schedules to make sure that there is an opportunity to talk about students with their parents and families. Giving that kind of feedback is probably the most important thing that we can do. Being a trusted adult to parents and students does more to move our students through the district successfully than almost anything else that we can do. So again, thank you to everybody who participates in that afternoon, afternoon, night after night. It really does make a difference. And last week in particular, because the next big thank you I have is for everybody's patience on Thursday. Again, I'm not sure any of us could have guessed what was coming. Clearly, none of the governors, none of the forecasters. At 1:30, when we went outside to make decisions, not one snowflake. It was pretty lovely out there, and yet by 3 o'clock, almost a disaster. That's the best thing I can say. So I have a lot to share and some thank yous for Thursday. So we were able to cancel programs, but as you know, we do have an extended day program. We have a number of working parents in this district. We have more than 750 students that attend our extended day program in the elementary schools. And as you can imagine, it took me four hours to go 13 miles. We have staff members that took six hours and longer, some people who actually just stayed in town because they were not able to get home. So as you can imagine, the stress and fear and anxiety of parents trying to get here to the district to pick up their children was huge. And we are beyond grateful for our extended day staff. I will tell you that we had people in each one of our buildings, God bless you, people in each one of our buildings who stayed with the kids, who made sure that they felt safe, who made sure that they had a snack, who made sure that they weren't afraid. And we heard a lot about that in other districts and other places, but believe it or not, happening right here in Nutley. So we did recognize those people individually, but I did invite them to come this evening. And I would like, if you're here, I hope that you'll stand up and let us honor you. From Lincoln School, Roxanne Teseras and Richie Volcato, they're here well past 8:30 that night with students. From Radcliffe School, Kim, Kim Dom, I can't even say it, Dom, Domanetan, thank you. Kim from Radcliffe, are you here? Kim also stayed after 8:30 with students. Maria Castranova at Spring Garden School was there until 8:30. Mr. DePinto, who is Jamie Strofachi's dad, stayed until 7:30. He was incredible because he was kind of on his own out there, and he made it work. It was wonderful, and we thank him as well. Yanacaw School, Joel Friedman and Kim Elju. Thank you guys for coming this evening. Just so you know, they were there until well after 9 o'clock. It's a lot when you consider then that the commute could have been an additional four or six hours home. Thank you. I know, again, I know I've said this to you, but thank you for everything you did for our students on Thursday, but for our whole team. Again, I say it every board meeting, but I'll say it again. We couldn't have a better team. We, I would put us up against anybody. Our teachers are above and beyond, no matter what we do, every time we have something to do, and I couldn't be more grateful. You might not be able to hear it in my voice, but I have a little bit of a tear in my eye thinking how fabulous that you are. So I do thank you for all of that. I also thank Ken Benya and Janine Locan Solo, who have been directing our supervisors, who made sure that everybody was ready. It's part of our layers. Thank you for being part of our many, many layers to making sure that everything could go that smoothly, and obviously for keeping in touch with all of us who also couldn't get home. Karen Greco, Ian, let me just say, I don't think you guys know what it takes to plan for weather and canceling and calling a snow day and communicating that to not only our staff members, but to the community and the Department of Public Works and to our custodians. It's 3 o'clock in the afternoon, and 11 o'clock at night, and 4 o'clock in the morning, and 6 o'clock in the morning, and 9 o'clock in the morning, and they answer their phone every single time I call. So for that, not only am I grateful, a thank you, hey, gotta keep answering. I'll find you, but thank you for that. And along with that, I do have to say, our custodial team stayed until 11 o'clock to make sure everything was clear, to make sure that the lots and sidewalks were clear after all that crazy snow fell, and they were back here in the morning because we had the delayed opening, and they wanted to make sure that the heat and everything was on. So our custodians, grounds, maintenance crew, Phil Nicoletti, again, thank you because none of us would want to be out there in the freezing cold and making that happen. We also have our partners at the Department of Public Works, not just Mayor Scarpelli, but Mike Luzzi and their team, who stay out all night and do that for the rest of the community so we can commute safely and so that we can get to school. They were wonderful. We were ready to open, but those roads were just too terrible, and after that commute, it just didn't seem safe. And as you know, we closed. So thank you to all of the community members. Typically, when I do that, it's not always popular, and I get a lot of comments, texts, emails, and I will say, thank you so much for your support. I think everybody knew that this was unusual and early and worse than we expected. So thank you for your patience, and thank you for being so willing to reschedule because we did have to reschedule an awful lot. Two things that we were not able to do, we did have to reschedule our interviews for our coordinator and director of school counseling, so we do not have information to share on that. We were able to reschedule those for November 28th. The whole committee was able to reconvene. And again, our budget meetings, which I think Karen already spoke about. So thank you. I wish you all a happy, healthy, wonderful Thanksgiving with your family and friends, and if you're traveling, please be safe.
Thank you, Dr. Blazer. On behalf of the Nutley Board of Education as well, I just wanted to thank all of the staff, custodians, the township. It's amazing how we all seem to come together when a lot of pressure is on us to do great things, and I am really proud of the efforts of everyone, including the community. I was out on the road at 9:30 till about 3 o'clock in the morning, and I will tell you that the schools were clean. I drove by, there were still guys doing their work. The DPW Parks and Recreation, they had all of their teams out doing what they needed to do. And we had to make some tough decisions in a short period of time, and I know that there was nothing more frustrating than sitting in gridlock pretty much in everywhere you could possibly go in New Jersey. So thank you for the patience. We are a team, like we say, that, you know, we work hard to be a partnership with everyone. And I think the events of Thursday, as trying as they were, really represent what we're all about, and I thank all of you for that. Okay, we're going to move over to our committee reports, and we're going to start off with academic with Mr. Balsama.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. The academic committee met on November 14th at 7:45. Discussion was, Mrs. Locan Solo gave an introduction to work being, to work beginning on standards-based report cards for pre-k. This is being developed by teachers, similar to what is in use at the elementary level. A workshop for elementary parents on standards-based report cards is being planned as a follow-up and along with the end of the second marking period, and report cards going home. Mr. Benya and Mrs. Locan Solo presented a proposal to provide a stipend for the extended day lead supervisors. Approval for this is on the agenda for tonight. Dr. Blazer reported on the progress of the extended day program since the program review and made additional recommendations to continue the stipends for Mrs. Locan Solo and Mr. Benya as they continue to implement program upgrades and enrichment. This is also on tonight's agenda for approval. Dr. Blazer shared the committee structure and process for the coordinator, director of school counseling. Interviews originally scheduled for last Friday, due to the snow, as you just heard, they were scheduled for November 28th. Dr. Blazer also reviewed the information shared by the administrative committee. Mr. Benya reviewed field trip and professional development requests, and Dr. Blazer reviewed personnel and legal updates. Next meeting of the academic committee will be Wednesday, December 12th, 7:30.
Thank you, Mr. Balsama. I'm going to actually do administration. Administration met on November 14th, 2018. Dr. Blazer reviewed, in attendance was myself, Mr. Kaczynski, and Ms. Dancheck Martin. Dr. Blazer reviewed the previously approved plans for the reformed church property purchase. The committee discussed the need to move forward with instructional space for September. There is a continued growth in both general and special education, as Dr. Blazer discussed this evening, and with the failure of the referendum, possible need for redistricting. We've already begun to receive various requests for next year. Dr. Blazer has contacted the demographer, the updated study, last one was completed in 2016. Dr. Blazer also reviewed safety and security meeting held on November 7th. Mrs. Yamanz, Mr. Memore, and Mr. Nicoletti, Mr. Bemmeister, Mr. Natty Ferraro, Mrs. Boyle were in attendance. I was available on that call. I was on a telephone conference in that meeting as well, and Dr. Blazer also was in that meeting. The timeline was updated, and additional future items were discussed. Dr. Blazer also reviewed the safety and security purchases on the agenda for tonight's meeting, including the process for transferring funds from capital reserve. Dr. Blazer reviewed the competitive mid-process for hiring security services. This is the process for contacting the firm to hire and manage the security monitors that will be at the secure entrances at the high school and the middle school, the plan for coverage for facility access prior to school opening through extracurriculars and for coverage for evenings and weekend events. District interviews with security officers have also been completed. We're continuing to work with the Nutley Police Department, who will update our memorandum agreement to reflect the new positions and protocols and submit that to the county and state. Dr. Blazer shared the five-year budget projection and updated budget calendar, and Dr. Blazer provided an update on personnel and legal issues. Next meeting for the administrative committee will take place on Monday, December 12th, at 4:30 PM. Next up, we have finance, and it's going to be done by Mr. Klein.
Thank you, Mr. President. Finance committee met on November 13th at 4:30. Five, five things were highlighted. Mr. Nicoletti and Ms. Yamanz providing an update on the Radcliffe School boiler replacement project and the heating issue that occurred on November 12th, as Mr. Nicoletti went on to discuss the installation of new doors of the Washington School modules, as well as the additional fencing at Yanacaw School and the status of the work orders throughout the district. Ms. Yamanz discussed the timelines for architectural and engineering work that is needed to complete the subdivision and subsequent site approval for the proposed parking lot at 45 Hillside Crescent. The committee reviewed the finance resolutions that are on the agenda tonight, as well as Ms. Yamanz and Dr. Blazer discussed the access control upgrades and camera storage capacity resolutions as they relate to the security upgrades in the district. Ms. Yamanz and Dr. Blazer provided the process for procuring security monitoring services through the competitive contract process as it relates to the RFP, and then the committee reviewed the proposed contract, calendar for the proposal of timelines for the 2019-2020 budget. And our next meeting is December 11th, which is Tuesday night at 4:30.
Thank you, Mr. Klein. We're going to go over to Ms. Dancheck Martin for policy.
Thank you, Mr. President. The policy committee met on November 14th at 6 o'clock. We reviewed and discussed and updated the policies on tonight's agenda for the first reading. Additionally, updates to the code of conduct and harassment, intimidation, and bullying policies were also discussed. The next policy committee meeting will be held on Wednesday, December 12th. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dancheck Martin. Okay, we now come to the portion of our meeting where we allow members of the public to address the board, and this section, we allow questions or comments on only the resolutions addressed on tonight's agenda. Our board regulation 601 allows 20 minutes for these communications. Each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. Speakers may speak more than once, only after others wishing to speak on a topic have been heard. All statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember to always state your name and address each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mr. Memore before you take the microphone. Will the first person wishing to be heard on the resolutions for tonight, please step forward? Seeing none, okay. Mr. Balsama, would you take academic resolutions, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move academic resolutions, one and two as written.
Roll call, Mr. Memore.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Congasella?
Yes.
Okay, I'd like to move resolutions, one through three as written.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call, Mr. Memore.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Mrs. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Congasella?
Yes.
Ms. Russo, would you move finance, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move finance resolutions, one through 15, as listed.
Roll call, Mr. Memore.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Congasella?
Yes.
Mr. Klein, would you move personnel, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I move personnel, resolution one as written.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Memore.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Congasella?
Ms. Dancheck Martin, would you move policy, please?
Yes, Mr. President, I'd like to move policy, policy resolution number one as written.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Memore.
Mr. Balsama?
Yes.
Mrs. Dancheck Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Ferraro?
Yes.
Mr. Klein?
Yes.
Ms. Russo?
Yes.
Ms. Sherman?
Yes.
Mr. Congasella?
Okay, in this section, we allow questions or comments on all school-related matters. Our regulation allows 30 minutes for these communications. Again, each person shall be limited to three minutes, and we ask you to try to stay within this requirement. As stated earlier, all statements will be directed to me as the chairperson, and no one may address the board members individually. Please be reminded that if your statement is too lengthy, abusive, obscene, irrelevant, or redundant, your participation may be terminated. Please remember always to state your name and address each and time you take the, each and every time you address the board and sign in with Mr. Memore before you take the microphone. First person wishing to step, and you are here. Did you, Mr. Memore, did you sign in? Okay.
Mr. President, the day after the election, the Board of Commissioners had a meeting, and Joe Scarpelli likened the resolution again as a demonstration Einstein's theory of insanity, where he did it again and failed. But what I don't understand, is an ordinance being considered now before the Board of Commissioners, 30% of all apartments to be one-bedroom, and 70% to be two or more bedrooms. And they increased the size of a one-bedroom to 950 square feet, which, according to the Rutgers study, is going to have more children. Now, if I understood, Mrs. Blazer, this evening, you're trying to solve a problem right now, and nobody's even considered how many more apartments are on the planet anyway. And I find that Einstein's very clear. Did anybody sit down with the Board of Commissioners to figure out how many more they're planning on building?
So, Mr. Memore, we do communicate with the Commissioners as frequently as we can. I don't think that there's an answer to what the development's going to look like a year from now, two years from now, even 10 years from now. From my understanding, and I could be corrected, I'm not going to say that this is factual, but from what I've learned and what I've heard from legal and from talking to certain people, that we can't put a moratorium on development.
It is a moratorium.
Correct. So my, but my point is, is that I'm going to say that as long as there's land that can be developed, there's always a potential that whatever that use is going to be, may entail additional apartments that we may be able to forecast today, but we may not be able to forecast a year from now, or 10 years from now, or 15 years from now.
But you're willing to bring a demographic, again, from 2016, to anticipate, but nobody, not one person, the Board of Ed, has sat down with the Board of Commissioners to say, it's 200 apartments, anticipate. Potentially, because the Rutgers study did do it a very clear document. If, and the conclusion was very clear, if you live in a district that people consider to be a good school district, which I'm sure will satisfy that, there will be an increase... which I'm sure will satisfy that, there will be an increase in children. But what really amazes me, and a lot of other people who go to the Board of Commissioners, nobody sat down and tried to put a pencil to paper to come up with how many more apartments. We can only speculate on the children, but you anticipate. If you're going to be two- or three-bedroom apartments, now according to the realtors, they're going to sell like hotcakes, no problem. And who's going to have, who's going to bring in anticipated for $3,500 a month rents for three-bedroom apartments that somebody is not going to have children?
Well, so I'm going to tell you, I know that was part statement, part question. What I will say is, is that, you know, we are going to continue our ongoing conversations, and I would absolutely present that question to the Commissioners the way that you presented it here tonight. And I have no issue with that, but I think that taking speculation into consideration with space, what we've been doing here is not just planning for today. What the demographers report did tell us is that it's not only, our shortage doesn't rest upon this district as far as what our numbers are today. We're feeling pressure today that we don't have the footprint that we need, but we're also anticipating that we're going to have an influx of additional students that are going to surpass what our need is today. And our plan was to help with those numbers moving forward.
Does anybody have a number?
Well, the demographer, yeah, and I was going to say, and that was part of, that was one of the reasons why we were bringing the demographer in again. He did do a full report the last time that he updated the numbers, which we do have the evidence of that report, which I believe is still on our website. And we're going to bring him in again to update those numbers, because it's been three years since we've done that. So we need to make sure, again, that conversation has to be had with the Commissioners as well. If they have any further details on the Hopplaroche development, now would be the time to share it with a demographer coming in who's going to plan that. We asked that same question the last time. So, and they were unsure what the development was going to be. So our position is, is that unfortunately, some of those things were reactive to, right? Because we are a body that is here to ensure the best outcome for our students and to make sure that the school district is performing at its best. When we're dealing with our other attachment, which is the local government, and they're unsure of what the outcome is at Hopplaroche as being the biggest undeveloped space right now. If they don't have answers, it's very difficult for us to speculate what's going to come out of there.
I understand the position you're in, and to say a number, everybody would be made to guess at a number. But it really seems to be, to the average citizen, nobody's even taken, they postponed the ordinance two times now, and they're waiting to change the numbers around yet again. But somewhere, somehow, if we're going to be, if we're going to care about our children, we have to say, this is the type of a number, 100, 200, whatever we think it's going to be. And we do have the intelligence to do that with. But when you said, the Commissioner said, 70% of all new apartments will be over two bedrooms, somebody has to stop and think, we're destined to trail us for the rest of our lives because nobody can come up with a number.
Well, and again, that was part question, part statement. But what I will say is, is that that's going to be a continuing conversation with the Commissioners. The 70/30 split on how they're going to develop or what they're going to allow to develop in those apartments, that is certainly a separate conversation. We do not enter into that conversation piece, that is the decision that they make.
Maybe, maybe we should.
And we can sit down, and listen, we've made every attempt to sit down and continue the conversations with the Board of Commissioners. You know, last year, at the beginning of this year, we actually had a joint session. We had one the year prior. We've been able to communicate and provide those numbers to them. We have our staff that are working on updating those numbers again with the October 15 final numbers that we were planning to share with the Commissioners hopefully before year end. And if we can't meet with them before year end, I'm sure that we'll be there in January, February. But our goal is to make sure that that is available on our side, which is accurate based on the kids that flow through these buildings, that we're going to be able to give them as much detail as we can. And at the same token, they're going to have to navigate certain things that are going to happen with the development on freight. How those all come together, I don't, it would be speculation if I did it, exactly. So, and I don't want to speculate 1,000 or 1,500 units, right? And we don't want to build for that and end up with 200. So we need to make sure that whatever we do, speculation has to be, there has to be some type of formula that makes sense for everybody, even if we're going to take what we may want to consider a guest in it. So.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else we shouldn't be hurting? Seeing none, any old business to come before the board? Any new business?
Mr. President, if I may. About three years ago, I applied to fill an unexpired term on the Nutley Board of Education. After getting to know everyone on the board, our new and now not-so-new superintendent and administrators, I decided to run for a full term and see where the journey would take me. I could see that this was a unique board that could do great things together. Each one of my fellow board members is truly remarkable to me. The public could only see what I have seen these last few years. The hours each one of them dedicates to volunteer their time, not just at meetings, but in the community, attending events, supporting the students, wrestling over long, difficult decisions, time away from their family, and enduring criticism, sometimes unfairly, on social media. All so they can give back to the community in a way that profoundly impacts the students by making tough decisions in order to provide the students with the best educational foundation. It has been amazing watching the students in this district embrace all of the challenges put before them during uncertain times that are often hard to explain to them. Our students are intelligent, resilient, compassionate, daring. They are embracing the world around them in ways we could never imagine. I am honored to have been part of this board and hope that the friendships that develop during this unique time together endure longer than our time served here on the board. We didn't always agree, and at times it took a few hours before we could arrive at what we ultimately all believed was in the best interest of the students in this district. The time has come for me to end my journey as a member of the Nutley Board of Education in order that I may embrace new opportunities ahead of me. I hereby resign from the Nutley Board of Education effective December 31st, 2018. I am proud to have had the opportunity to serve with each one of my board members, superintendent, administrators, staff members, teachers, and parents. I thank you for your dedication to the students and the community, and I wish you all a healthy and happy holiday season.
Ms. Sherman? I am speechless, absolutely speechless. I know we've had a very, very short couple of conversations about concerns and your future and things that you want to do, and I commend you on all of that, and I commend you for the support that you provide to each and every one of us. I don't have words right now, and I'm not going to put any words together, and I'm not going to try to make it up because I want to make sure that whatever I do say is going to be appropriate to identify exactly the relationship that I know exists between us on this board and the friendship that has developed since then. So I'm going to refrain from any further comment. I'm going to open it up to the other board members if there's anything they would like to say. They may want to refrain as well, but that's up to them. So don't take their desire not to say anything as being one that was from a bad place. Just take it from shock, from the same place that I'm taking it from. So at this time, I'm going to open up to the board if they would like to say anything.
Right, I just want everybody to know that when you put in private for the unexpired time, I didn't vote for you behind closed doors, but, you know, I didn't know you. Getting to know you, it's been a great experience. I'm a little upset right now that we're doing this, but I'll let the rest of the conversation occur behind closed doors, but it's been truly a remarkable journey, and I understand what you're going through. I understand the time and commitment that's involved in this process. And I thank you for your altruism to serve, you know, for nothing other than the love of the town.
All right, whereas the Board of Education will be discussing matters exempt from public discussion pursuant to NJSA 10:4-12. Now therefore being resolved, if the Board of Education recesses to close executive session, it is time to discuss student matters, personal and property acquisition. Be it further resolved, if the results of this discussion will be made public by inclusion on the agenda of subsequent meeting of the Board of Education when the reasons for discussing such matters in closed session no longer exist. Can we have a motion to go to closed? All in favor? Thank you, everyone, have a wonderful holiday, and we'll see you in December.